Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April meeting of the Penridge School Board. I'd like to start by calling the meeting to order and saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Cron, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Vanis Clemons?
Here.
Mr. Casper? Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rigoma?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
Dr. Yarnell?
Here. Thank you. At this point, we are going to do student recognition.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, we have many students and many staff that are doing wonderful things here at Penridge, but sometimes there are students and staff who really stand out above the crowd for their accomplishments. So tonight, we have two presentations for you. Our first, in-person recognition, is a student/senior Hannah Card who did very well in the Technology Student Association State Competition. In fact, this was the second year in a row she earned first place in the TSA. Her teacher, Mr. Alan Andrew Kreides, is here to share the details of Hannah's remarkable accomplishment, not only this year, but in her entire career at the high school. So Hannah, please come forward, and let's give her a round of applause. Mr. Andrew Kreides, please fill them in on her accomplishments.
Somebody's glasses. This is one of the highlights of my career as far as being an educator, to have someone coming in front of you today to see some of the work that they did. Hannah Card, four years in a row in this competition. First year, she did jewelry box. Second year, she did contemporary Windsor chair, came in second place. Her junior year, she did vanity made out of walnut and curly maple. It was absolutely beautiful. It was one of the nicest projects that ever came out of Penridge. The inside, the back, and the front, the sides were all done with the same craftsmanship. It was absolutely unbelievable. This year, she challenged herself to make a rocker. One of the problems with the rockers is that it's all sculpted, so you have like nothing that's 90 degrees, nothing that's cut on the saw. It just left away. It is a heck of a lot of detail work went into it. Part of the competition, not only is making the object, but you also have to come up with plans for it. You have drawing and also written part for it, and you also have a oral presentation that you have to do. One of the great accomplishments for her is being a female. Going into this event, where very few females enter it, and for her to win two years in a row, it's absolutely remarkable. Down the road next year, she'll be attending Millersville University, and hopefully she'll end up being a tech ed teacher, and maybe Penridge will have an opening when she's ready. But she has a personality that she can deal with people, she can solve problems, she's one heck of a craftsperson, and just totally dedicated, and it's my privilege to have her as a student.
I would like to just thank my teachers and my parents and friends for supporting me and for the school board and the school district to have a program as amazing as the program that we have, because if it wasn't for this program, I don't think I'd know what path to take for graduating, because this is truly what I love, and I can't wait to go and become a teacher and teach this every day.
One last comment. Hannah's my 26th person attending Millersville, and she's the second female. May 19th is the Arts Festival, if you want to come out and see it again.
Okay, next up. Next up is our high school debate team. Members are Julia Frederick, Sophie Savariano, Evan Pepper, and Courtney Landis. They won the Lehigh Valley Interscholastic Debate Association Championship for the third time in four years. Their coach, Ms. Lisa Maderek, who is also our high school librarian, will fill us in on their accomplishments. So students, if you'll come up to the front here, and Ms. Maderek, please, as well.
This debate team is one of the most amazing I've worked with. I have three sophores and a senior who beat an all-senior plus one junior team this year, and they're going to share their accomplishments of the entire season with you.
So to begin, we started with the league, and this was the whole debate team of the scoring teams, it's not just us, and we had managed to earn second for the league.
This is our semifinal trophy. We took home first place, and for semifinals, it was just the four of us. This is our finals trophy. Finals was last Thursday, and we won two ballots to one, and the third ballot was won by 2.5 in the margin. And then this is our bowl, which rotates around to whichever team wins the finals every year, so we won this last Thursday in addition to the finals trophy. And we would just personally like to thank Ms. Debona for supporting the debate team this year and hopefully in the years to come.
And just some last remarks. I would love to thank Ms. Maderek. She's been such a great and caring person that we've named her Mom Maderek, because she just, she always comes through and spends countless hours, and she does a great job for this program. Thank you.
And I would just like to thank you, the school board, that allows this to go on. Our numbers in debate keep growing. We started with 52 students this year, which is the largest ever, and without your support, debate would not go on, and it's such a skill and a learning skill that they grab from year to year, that they use not just here, but when they leave us and go out and to be into the world. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew Kreides, you better have your students building more cabinets for all these trophies we're winning.
Maybe one or all of you can run for president someday. There's precedent for that. At this point, we will move to questions and comments from guests. Penridge School Board welcomes public comment. According to Policy 903, we remind everyone of the following. Public comments shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the Board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual Board members, district employees, or members of the public. A speaker may speak once during each comment period. Please note that these sessions are designed for comments. Questions raised and not addressed may be followed up at a later time. Is there anyone who would like to address the Board? If not, we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of items A through I on the agenda. Are there any of these items or items within the items that Board members want to have voted on separate? Mrs. Miller.
I just have a question, Mrs. McHale, on the personnel report. Number three, do we have coverage through June?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar, items A through I? Thank you. Mrs. Schmidt, second? Thank you. Mr. Kraus moved in second to approve the consent calendar. Comments or questions for Board members? If not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero tonight. Next is the student liaison report. Not seeing anyone occupying his chair. We'll move to the president's report. First, to the right-to-know requests. At this point, this past month, the month of March, we have had at least five active right-to-know requests. The costs, attorney costs are $4,035.35. We also have a safety committee update. Mr. Loffler, are you doing that, wherever you're going? Hiding behind the chair.
Yes, thank you. Safety committee met on April 12th at 1:30. There were 13 members present at the meeting. Minutes were read aloud and approved from the March meeting. Monthly maintenance school inspection was read. The committee inspected West Rock Hill Elementary School on April 7th. In the reading room in the pod, there was an easel blocking one of the exterior doors. Memo went out to the principal to have it removed. The exterior door in the faculty room went latch. Maintenance had already repaired it, or it is repaired. There was trouble with the panic button. It wasn't able to reset. We found that it was a low battery signal. Batteries were replaced, and the system is out of trouble. There were a few hallway outlet plastic covers missing. There were three crates of obsolete material blocking the main electrical panels. They've been there for some time, so sent a memo out to the principal to have these books obsoleted so maintenance can get them removed. Overall, the building is in very nice condition, very clean. All inspections were up to date. All safety books are in place and also up to date, so no other reports given. With old business, the final visit at MG Tactical was done on March 31st, and the final report will be issued and stripped out shortly. Raptor is in use and running smoothly. Additional printers and scanners are going to be ordered for backup. New business, report to the state. Every year, I have to report our committee to the state, so our annual renewal workshop application has been approved. For the 2016 year, we will receive a 5% workman's comp discount on our agreements. The meeting was adjourned at 1:55, and our next safety meeting is here in the LGI room on Tuesday, May 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As part of the president's report, it's, I think, my pleasure to report that the state finally has a budget after almost 10 months of deliberation. Well, actually, more than that, but 10 months into the process. We don't know exactly how much money we will get yet, probably more than we had anticipated, which is always a good thing. Apparently, there were some glitches in that calculation, and they have to be fixed before the districts get it. We definitely will see more than we would have with the governor's budget plan for distribution in the actual budget passed by the House of Representatives in '07. And I would note that I had lunch with one of our local Pennsylvania House of Representatives members on Thursday. The House Republicans plan to submit a budget for 2016-17 in two weeks. This particular individual didn't sound very hopeful that things would be better in the 16-17 negotiations than they were in the 15-16 negotiations. That's very disappointing, but not terribly surprising. So I guess, Mr. Dabert, you not only can keep your job, but you'll have lots to do trying to manage the budget or lack thereof for the foreseeable future. At this point, we'll turn it over to happier terms and Dr. Rattigan, the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Yes, speaking of happy terms, we have some new individuals who have been recently hired and glad to have with us on our team. For those of you who don't know them, let me introduce Ms. Michelle Burkholder, our Director of Puples Services. This is her first official Board meeting. Mrs. Diane Miller is a familiar face by way Mrs. Miller. She's officially our Director of Technology. Sitting next to her, and she's very happy that Mrs. Beeler is here, Linda Beeler, our database administrator. Welcome, Linda. And I know that Ms. Jessica Short is here, our interim Assistant Director of Transportation, so we wanted to welcome all of them and give them a warm round of applause to welcome Some thank yous tonight, first to the North Middle School for the District Office Meeting Room Display. Thanks also to Kathy Holliday for a donation of Tama five-piece Swingstar drum set with cymbals and stands to Central Middle School. The Class of 1965 deserves thanks for the donation of two flagpoles to be installed near the existing main flagpole at Hellman Field. And also a thank you to Jessica Gado for a donation of miscellaneous art items to the Penridge High School Art Department. Next, we have our May Takes Pride theme of the month coming up. That theme will be dependability. Students will be reminded that dependability is the quality of demonstrating reliability. A person who is dependable is one others can count on for their truthfulness and integrity. Individuals who demonstrate dependability have a reputation of doing what they say they are going to do. They persist in projects and responsibilities until the task or job is complete. And lastly, our points of pride for this month. Congratulations to two Penridge students whose artwork is featured in the 2016 Intelligencer Reality Art Contest. Abigail Kim, a ninth grader, won first place for a watercolor that provided all five required items. Had to be a mythical creature, pasta, a trophy, an outdated technology, and a sense of panic. It is an excellent painting of a panicking fairy with spaghetti hair calling for help on a rotary film. Meanwhile, Dan Silva, a 12th grader, won honorable mention for a stylized digital art rendering of David Bowie. You can view all the artwork on the Intel's website. Forty-five members of the high school drama club took part in the 48th Bucks County Playhouse Student Theater Festival in New Hope. Kiara Jacoby won the Best Director Award, and Devin Lewis won the Best Actor in a Comedy Award. Both are seniors, so we congratulate them. During the fall and winter, members of the girls' lacrosse team at the high school collected equipment such as sticks, sneakers, cleats, and protective eyewear to give to the Philly in Motion Girls Lacrosse Team. Coaches Karen Schnur and Will Rodziewicz took the girls to Drexel University for a clinic. Five players attended and did an amazing job, according to Coach Schnur. The girls assisted and encouraged these young blacksters who are underprivileged and do not get to play lacrosse all the time. She said, "I was so proud to call myself their coach in the way they acted, encouraged, and had fun with these young girls. As a coach, I couldn't be more proud of my entire team." The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation has included our K-12 Music Program on its Best Community for Music Education 2016. Only 476 school districts across the country, 63 in Pennsylvania, and 10 in Bucks and Montgomery Counties combined, were awarded this honor. BCME recognizes community leaders, teachers, parents, and students who work together to ensure access to music learning for all students as part of the school curriculum. "We are proud of the opportunities for music education we provide students throughout the district, both in and outside the classrooms," said Carolyn Warner, who coordinates the district's music program. "The school board and the administration recognize the importance of the arts and helping students reach their fullest potential, and for that, we are grateful." That also is from Carolyn. And lastly, members of our Transportation Department were recently recognized by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for 15 years of participating in the Adopt a Highway Program. During that time, volunteers have collected approximately 100 bags of trash from Route 152 between Route 113 and South Percival Road in Hilltown. This is a great example of community service by our Transportation Department. So that's my report this evening, Dr. Yarnell.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move to the committee reports, the first of which is activities. Mrs. Yardley.
Okay, thank you. The Activities Committee has not met since our last meeting, and our next meeting is scheduled for May 4th, and it is a full agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Curriculum. The Curriculum Committee did meet on April 11th, 2016. I have three motions from that meeting tonight to present to the Board for approval. First is, I move that we approve running a new summer band camp at North Middle School. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rigoma. Moved in seconded. Comments or questions for Board members? If not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Second, I move that we approve the restructuring of the RSS class at the high school to allow students to earn an English credit for that course. The course will now be titled "English Workshop." Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Vegas Hunt. Moved in seconded to approve this restructuring of the class. Comments or questions for Board members? Not? All those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Third, I move we approve the waiver of the facilities fee for camp invention so that parents do not incur extra participation costs in this summer enrichment program. Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you. Moved in seconded to approve camp invention waiver. Do we have any comments or questions on this issue? If not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. The next curriculum committee is scheduled for May 12th, 2016, and we too, I believe, have a full agenda, so prepare for those meetings coming up. Facilities Committee, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Facilities Committee met on April 4th. There are five motions tonight for facilities. The first motion is to obsolete items that are listed in letters A through F.
Do we have a second to the obsoleting items list? Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Moved in seconded to approve the obsolete items list. Comments or questions for Board members? If not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Schmidt?
Second motion is to approve the weight room flooring equipment from BSN Sports in the amount of $61,699.91.
Do we have a second to the motion for the weight room flooring equipment?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Cullen, moved in seconded to approve the weight room flooring equipment purchase. Comments or questions for Board members? Mrs. Yardley?
Yeah, since this isn't a regular purchase and the fact that it's not coming from the district account, can we make a note where the money is coming from? It's not stated in the motion.
That's exactly what my question was going to be.
Of course, yes.
Yeah, will we clear this? Because it's divided.
Do you have a recommendation for how we word it?
Me?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, part of it's coming from the fundraising money, and then part of it...
If you go to the minutes, it's pretty clear in there. If we could just maybe, maybe go to there and get some language.
The minutes from the committee.
Oh, yeah.
It says in the minutes that the fundraising account totals $50,789. Is that correct, still? And then the remainder of the funds would be charged to the athletic budget?
And then returned.
And then the money would be replaced as additional fundraising commitments or received, so that is in the minutes.
To our fund out, to our fund out, yeah.
Well, no, it's the...
Or to his, okay, but still back to our...
Right, to the athletic.
To the athletic, right. So it's not taxpayer money.
Mrs. Schmidt, this is your motion.
Okay. Okay, so a motion to approve the weight room floor and equipment from BSN Sports in the amount of $61,699.91, which will come from fundraising totaling $50,789. The remainder from the athletic budget to be replaced as additional fundraising is received.
And, Mrs. Cullen, are you, you were the second, or are you willing to?
I'm second.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions on the amended motion? If not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven-one. Thank you. Mrs. Schmidt?
Okay. The third motion is to approve the Land Mobile Corporation in the amount of $15,301.50 regarding radio transmissions for Transportation Department.
And do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. Moved in seconded to approve the Land Mobile Corporation for radio transmissions. Comments, questions from Board members? If not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Schmidt?
Fourth motion is a motion to waive the Turffield rental fee for Bucksmont Torch on May 28th, 2016 for soccer clinic fundraiser for Hellman Field.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. Moved in seconded to waive the Turffield rental fee. Comments or questions for Board members? If none, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Schmidt?
The fifth motion is a motion to accept an award. The bids listed below, A, letter A is Bedminster floor tile replacement to write flooring in the amount of $37,730. And letter B is Bedminster asbestos removal to Prism Response Incorporated for $39,929.
Do we have a second to these two items?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rigoma. Moved in seconded to approve the awarding of bids. Comments or questions from Board members? If not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Schmidt?
The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled to meet on May 2nd.
Thank you. Next is the Finance Committee. Mr. Casper is not with us tonight, so I will move to this particular item. The Finance Committee met twice in the intervening period since the last Board meeting, on April 4th and April 18th. First of all, there is the motion to approve contracts, and there are seven of these, items A through G. Do I have a second to the motion to approve those contracts?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved in seconded to approve the contracts listed A through G. Comments or questions for Board members? Not? All those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Second motion is to approve the Maui invoice number 1000051612 in the amount of $1,000. Do I have a second to this?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved in seconded to approve the Maui invoice. Comments or questions for Board members? Not? All those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Third motion is to transfer $1,500 from the 2015-2016 Board Services Budget to the Scholarship Fund. I move this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved in seconded to approve this transfer. I would note that I asked Board members if we could do this last time. I also asked Mr. Dabert for... I also asked Mr. Dowdard for the balance in that account. It was more than $14,000, so this is a relatively minor portion of the remainder in this year's budget, and this will allow us to approve eight students for the super senior scholarships. And I had a call today from Mrs. DeBomner, so I suspect I need to call her back tomorrow if we approve this. Comments or questions for Board members on this issue? If not, all those in favor? I'm sorry, Mrs. Yarley.
Yeah, I just, my only comment is, when will we discuss what's going to happen next year?
It's a good question, and I think we do need to put that on a finance agenda.
All right, yeah, that's my question. Thank you.
So I will keep that in the back of my mind. Prove Mr. Casper's if he shows up again, hijack to Cleveland or wherever he's going in the near future. Anyway, any other comments or questions on this motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. The next Facilities, sorry, Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for May 2nd, 2016, and we will have additional budget presentation and information that night, so that's part of the agenda. The Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Bucks County IU Board of School Directors met on April 19th. The Special Education Mini Report discussed the BCIU's Early Childhood Services Program and how early intervention can positively impact the development and future of our children when a developmental delay or disability is suspected. I can vouch for that. The Bucks County IU Early Childhood Services, or ECS, provides services to children with multiple disabilities, autism, intellectual disabilities, behavioral needs, gross and fine motor delays, as well as speech and language delays. The IU's professional serves students in over 300 settings and provide education and support to family members. An organizational-wide initiative will focus on meeting state standards through differentiated instructional practices. Through Head Start and Early Head Start Grants, the BCIU is successfully working in collaboration with the Early Childhood Services to provide a continuum of services to ensure a more inclusive setting for our students with special needs versus the more restricted setting. Program and Services Mini Report informed us that the BCIU connects with job-alike leaders of the 13 school districts and three career and technology centers. There was many advisory councils facilitating collaboration and sharing best practices across the county. These meetings are facilitated by the IU while also generating feedback from participants to enhance the services and supports provided. There are approximately 25 advisory councils supported by the IU and include areas of business, technology, suicide prevention, ESL, math, language arts, science, security, and many, many more. The IU is hosting an executive function summer program July 5th through 14th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for $550. The program is designed for students entering 6th through 9th grade in the fall of 2016. The objective is to improve executive function through explicit instruction in study strategies and critical thinking skills that can be applied to all school material. Please refer to the BCIU website for more details and registration information. And I would like to add that students who previously attended this workshop and the parents commented on how well their students performed afterward when they entered school in the fall. Reminder, mark your calendars for the run, run, walk, and stroll. Sean's already said he's going to meet me there. The 5K fundraising event held on Saturday, May 14th, at the Bucks County IU location. Again, please refer to the website, the IU's website, for details and registration. The next meeting is scheduled for May 17th at 7:00 p.m. held at the IU location in Hillstown.
Do you have a stroller bringing up for me?
I do, in a wheelchair.
Thank you very much. Personnel, Mr. Ragomel, and I would note before I turn it over to Mr. Ragomel that motion number five is being pulled from tonight's agenda and will be put on the May 16th agenda. The reason for this is that Board members got an email late in the day with the changes. There were 74 pages in that email, so most of us, needless to say, did not have much opportunity to review those, so that's why it has been removed from tonight's agenda. Mr. Ragomel?
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Then there are four motions this evening for Personnel Committee. The first is to approve the amendment to the superintendent's contract.
Do we have a second to that amendment? Mrs. Cullen, thank you. Comments or questions from Board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Ragomel?
Second motion is a motion to confirm assignment of Keith Godschall as an acting South Middle School Assistant Principal effective April 26, 2016 through June 16, 2016, pursuant to the district's independent contract agreement with Source for Teachers. It is understood that Mr. Godschall shall be providing services as an employee of Source for Teachers.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Davis-Collins. Moved and seconded to approve the assignment of Mr. Godschall. Comments or questions from Board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Ragomel?
Third motion is to approve an amendment of, pardon me, memorandum of understanding between the Penrich School District and Penrich Education Association to resolve the August 10, 2015 agreements filed by PEA on behalf of employee 872.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved and seconded to approve this MOU. Comments or questions from Board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Ragomel?
Number four is a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding, pardon me, between the Penrich School District and Penrich...
Do we have a second to this motion? Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Moved and seconded to approve this MOU. Comments or questions for Board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, eight zero, sorry. Mr. Ragomel?
The next Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for May 4th, 2016.
Thank you. The Policy Review Committee, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. We did not meet. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 4th at this location.
Thank you. And the upper Bucks County Technical School Committee, Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Bucks County, I'm sorry, the Bucks County Technical School JRC Met on 421. Burn Wagon Cell, our Executive Director, shares some very exciting news. We were selected by Temple University's Office of Executive Leadership and Education as America's sole representative at an international technical education workshop located in China. I left out the names that I couldn't pronounce.
That's fine.
So Shen, Shen Golem. There we go, thank you. All expenses will be paid by Temple for Kathleen Plasnarsky and Dr. Bridget O'Connell, who will do a joint presentation at the event being held the last week of May. The UBCTS will now be in a position to build relationships with more Chinese tech schools, possibly leading to future student exchanges and other opportunities for our students. The renovations are winding down, and it should be noted that our students are saving us thousands of dollars by doing some of the renovations through their curricular studies, so that was exciting news as well. The UBCTS continues collaborating with Bucks County Community College and is closing in on a deal to provide our tech students the opportunity to earn up to half of an associate's degree by the time they graduate. Total credits issued will be determined by a formula that looks at the hours in the classroom, end of program assessments, time spent cooperative ed and internships, and industry-recognized certifications. The five tech schools in Montgomery County are watching us closely, so they can maybe mimic the same program. Executives from PICO stopped by on April 24th to present us with ceremonial check for $18,000 for renovations including energy-efficient lighting and motors controlled by variable frequency drives, whatever, and our recent upgrade expansion project. The grant was made through PICO Smart Idea Program. In the Skills USA State Competitions, Carlena Custodia, a 12th grade Penrich student, took a silver medal in welding, and Zach Bachner of Palcees won a bronze in marine repair. Josiah Daniels and Liam Phillips won second place in the Skills USA Culinary Challenge. Lastly, the Technical Schools holding their annual plant sale on May 2nd through the 6th. Please refer to the website for details. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 18th at 7:30. Thank you, Dr. Penrich.
Thank you. And by the way, I volunteered to go to China. I was not taken up on the offer. I would offer to pay for my way. Next, the Technology Committee. Before I hand this over to Mr. Kraus, I would say that we have made a change, and Mr. Kraus, from here on out, will be the Technology Committee Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kraus, for doing this. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Technology Committee met on April 11, and Mrs. Miller provided us a very comprehensive presentation of the district's technology and our positioning in various areas. Next, the Technology Committee meeting is scheduled for May 12, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Act 48, Mrs. Davis-Collins.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Act 48 Committee has not met since our last meeting, and it will be scheduled as needed.
Thank you. And Ad-Hoc Fundraising Committee, Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Yarley.
Ad-Hoc fundraising hadn't met since our last meeting, but is scheduled to meet on May 25th.
Thank you. Thank you. Full business? Not? Announcements. The next regular School Board meeting is scheduled for May 16, 2016 at 7:00 p.m. in Room LGI 3.3. That is here, in the Penrich High School. I would note that that's the night we hope to pass the preliminary budget, the proposed preliminary budget that we've already passed, but the preliminary budget. An executive session was held on April 18, 2016 for the purpose of Personnel Matters, and a similar executive session will follow tonight's meeting also for the purpose of Personnel Matters. Public comments? Mrs. Harry? You know the drill.
Diane Herring, Hilltown Township. I have a question regarding the motion that was voted on and accepted this evening on the Facilities Committee, item number four, where we are waiving the rental fee. The way the motion reads on the paper, it states that the soccer clinic fundraiser for Hellman Field. My inquiry is, are we holding a clinic that is raising funds for Hellman Field? Or, okay, I'm just looking for that because that was not clarified previously. And on the agenda under Personnel Committee, items 1, 2, 3, and 4, will these memorandums as an understanding be posted anywhere for the public to review?
Mr. Cox, can you answer that question first?
I'm trying to think through the substance of those documents. They probably are right-to-know documents, although some of the information contained within them probably would have to be redacted before those documents would be public. So they could be following redaction of information that potentially is of a confidential nature involving a particular employee, but generally speaking, those documents are public, so they can be posted if the district sees fit to do that.
Can be or should be.
There you go, okay. Would those documents, would the Board make a decision on that at some future meeting, whether they would make those documents public, or are we going to incur additional fees to write to no request to get copies of them?
We can make that decision without doing that. I will tell you that item one, it has to do with the superintendent's contract. Basically, that's a timeline for the evaluation process and the specific steps within.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a minor change, maybe that's an unfair characterization, but it is a change to try to make that a more efficient process.
Okay, thank you.
The other two have to do with PEA agreements as you were. Anyone else? If not, if I can find it, back to the right page. Questions from the press? Mrs. Furlo?
Sure.
Are you pressed tonight?
I'm not pressed tonight.
Okay, but you, a public comment?
Yeah, I'd like to make a public comment. Sue Furlo, West Rock Hill Township. You mentioned that the state budget appears to have more funds available for Penrich School District than originally believed and were budgeted, and you did not mention the exact amount or approximate amount. I would like to know what that is. The budget that was presented last week is more or less balanced, so I would like to know if taxes will be cut accordingly per that amount. I don't know if it's a big amount or a little amount, so I don't know if that's a reasonable expectation or not, but if it is a sizable amount, then I believe it is a reasonable expectation not to burden the taxpayer when you have already devised a budget, a balanced budget.
Mrs. Furlo, the numbers are subject to revision, as I think I mentioned, but according to the original version sourced from the House Republican Appropriations Committee meeting, Penrich would get about $318,000 more than they would have under the Governor's plan. So whether that's sizable or not, I don't know. That depends on your perspective, obviously, but it is a difference between roughly $10.4 and $10.7 million in state funding.
Well, if you figure our average property, what did we come out with in your last meeting? $4,200 as the average assessment?
I can't answer that. I don't know. We'll have to look.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a number of pieces of property, so, you know, to me, that's a sizable amount.
Obviously, we will have early budget discussions on May 2nd, and then a preliminary budget presumably passed on May 16th, so this is still forthcoming.
And when we have the Finance Committee meeting, will the budget be posted the following day or soon thereafter?
I think promising something for other people is difficult. Hopefully, it can be posted soon thereafter.
Because you'll need 30 days from the next Board meeting?
That's when we pass the preliminary budget on May 16th, and that's the reason we have until June 20th, so we have enough days in there. If it is posted within a day or two, we should be in good shape.
Okay, just...
That's, that's the plan. That's why the budget, preliminary budget, is being passed earlier than normal. It's not the third Monday in May as it sometimes is, or whatever day. In this case, it's the, basically, it's early, it's the 16th.
Right, I did notice it was a little early. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Questions from the press? Not? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming.